We're very formal.
Whatever you want to do.
Want you to know I have my.
No.
Yeah, I'm comparing to see if everything is, yeah. Yeah.
We're ready.
All right, ready? All right, I will open the study session of July 11th, 2022 at. And all council members are present except for Councilmember Stewart. Do I have a motion to excuse him? Yes, I'll make that motion. One of a second.
Oh, second.
Okay, and we will move. Oh, yeah, let's vote. All in favor, hi. Okay, we got it. Now we got. All right, hang on, I don't think we heard from any of our.
I was an I.
So was Pat.
Yeah. That's member Newman has her hand raised.
I, yeah.
Thank you.
I didn't know you didn't, you asked a consent for like approval, thanks.
Okay, so we will move on to study session business and we have a presentation from our friends at Sound Transit. I will send it to you.
Thank you very much, Mayor and councilmembers. It's great to be here in Sumner tonight. And we're very excited to give you an update on the very long awaited Sumner Parking and Access Improvements Project. Or as you likely know, it's a Sumner parking garage at the Sounder Station. I'm Austin Nielsen and I am with Sound Transit's Government and Community Relations Team here in Pierce County. And I'm joined by Sarah Perino, our project manager, just to provide you with an update and the progress that is going to be coming on the garage in the coming weeks and months. So we have a brief slideshow that we'll run through and happy to take any questions that you might have. After you'd like to announce or advance. So just a quick outline of our agenda. I just want to start off with a quick history lesson, as many of you are very well familiar. But also the Sound Transit realignment, as a result of COVID, it impacted the project. We'll then hand off to Sarah to talk about what the parking utilization looks like today. What the project will in procurement will look like in the months ahead. And then a little refresher on what is design bill? How are we going to take all that community input we've received to make a garage that will really be something that will fit in and be a great asset for the Sumner community? Next slide, please. So just a history and speaking with some of you before the meeting started. This is a long time in the making as the Sumner Garage, as you may recall, was in Sound Transit 2, which was passed in 2008. And it was one of four Sounder South parking garages here in Sumner, Puyallup, Kent, and Auburn. So it's been a very long time coming. And some recent history is that, as we all know, the global pandemic struck in March of 2020. A couple of weeks earlier, the Puyallup Garage, we actually executed that contract to begin construction. And we're just several weeks away from moving Summer forward until the pandemic hit. And as a result of the financial uncertainty, the Sound Transit Board paused all capital projects for an extended period of time to undergo a process that it called realignment. And this was to look at all Sound Transit's capital projects that were not currently under construction to make sure that they could be affordable, both with the financial impact of COVID-19 and the continuing cost pressures that we're seeing across our region in the very hot construction market. As a result of that, that was about a year and a half long process that the board wrapped up last summer. In that process, in the realignment action, the board set a new target completion date of the Sumner Garage for 2025. And a few months later, gave staff the go ahead to reengage the city so we can get the project moving forward. And that's what we've been working on in the last few months, working very closely with city staff. We're very excited. As you see on the screen, this is Puyallup, just a couple of months ago in the spring, and some of you were able to join us. The mayor, we were able to go out and see the garage a couple of weeks ago. This is the progress that we're looking forward to making happen here in Sumner in the coming years. And really make sure that we can have a station that can serve the community. Expand access to the many folks that we know are using Sumner today and have used Sumner in the past and will do Sumner Station in the future. With that, I'd like to hand it over to Sarah to walk us through about a little more about the project.
All right, as Austin said, my name is Sarah Perino. I'm the Senior Project Manager at Sound Transit, managing the Sumner Parking Garage. I'm also managing Kent and Auburn, so my world is parking garages all day, every day. So I wanted to kind of step back a couple of years, about three years, back to 2019. And talk, just quickly refresh everyone's memory, what utilization was, ridership looked like back, you know, pre-COVID, pre-pandemic times. If you look, I'm just going to talk about May. So if you look all the way over to the right there. The tall yellow bar that says 1266, that's our average ridership for the month of May in 2019. And about half of that, so around 600 of those boardings, there was a vehicle parked either at Sumner or Bonnie Lake.
That's not the one we have in here. That's two years earlier. We only have 22.
So I have two slides you should see. You should see it. Oh, okay, you should see two.
Okay, I assumed that was Puyallup.
No, no, no. So this is, this is here at Sumner Station.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just the, he's showing the next slide. I think if you hit the display settings at top and you just do like present or.
Yeah, I think if I. There you go. Jeff, it's right on the screen here. So be like Sarah saying, just go to display settings on that, which I don't know if you can get to it.
Oh, you might not be able to see that, yeah.
I think if you keep moving your mouse to the right.
There you go. Keep going, keep going. A little farther.
Oh, because I'm up here. Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it. Yep, okay. Well, now we can't see it because the little bars in the way on the right there. But on the slide in front of you. So we're going to just talk about May on the right. So 12, 1,266 on average boardings per day. And then approximately 600 of those, we have your, the parking garage, the parking lot at Sumner and Bonnie Lake. So the ones to the left, the, the blue and the orange are the parking counts at both Sumner. So Sumner on average was at 294, and that's what we consider 100% capacity. So we have approximately 300, I think, in 300 stalls currently today. And then we were looking at about 316, and that stays pretty steady at Bonnie Lake. Which I believe, sorry, what's Bonnie Lake, do you remember, capacity? I want to say that was. Yeah, I want to say that was almost at 100%, 100% capacity as well before, before COVID. So next slide, if we jump to today, 2022, so Sound Transit does, does this utilization count every month? And we'll be watching it steadily through construction. But as of the month of May, ridership, as you can see, the, the orange bars are steadily increasing. So we're sitting at about 457 boardings per day currently, which is definitely down from the 1,266 that we saw, you know, three years ago. And then the, the gray, I'm sorry, the, this, the orange bar, the dark orange bar, 289 shows that the Sumner parking lot is already full. So today, we currently are sitting at 100% utilization of the parking lot itself. And then the blue is Bonnie Lake. So it's been kind of on average 60 to 70 vehicles per day, which that is about 20% capacity today. So that's been staying pretty steady over the last few months. Next slide, please. So this is just a quick overview of the, of the project. I think most of you are probably pretty familiar with this. We've got approximately 505 net new stalls coming. And when we say net new, that means that could be a combination of parking structure installs or surface lot stalls. I'll talk a little bit, a lot about it later, but this is a design build project. So that means that what you're seeing here is just simply a concept and that design could change once we hire a design builder and choose a proposal. One other thing I wanted to mention here was this bus loop. So up in the top right-hand corner underneath that Zoom screen there. You'll see that orange line that kind of, sorry, loops up right there next to Narrow Street. So that's the current day conceptual plan for the new bus loop. We have been working with the city to kind of reroute, re-envision how the buses come into downtown Sumner. And the current plan as of today has them coming in Thompson, kind of right underneath the Zoom bar, you can't see it there. And then heading up station, past our parking garage, looping up there around Nero, and then coming back down south and then heading back out Thompson the same way. So that's the current plan for the.
Sarah, can I ask a question here? So isn't there, isn't there more parking than just the garage?
A current, yes, so.
Like those light gray spots or some of those parking lot and everything?
Yep, yeah. So the new, so there will be 500 new stalls at the station, and that's a combination of a parking garage and new surface stalls. So we'll basically give them the area, the footprint within where they can work and they can build, they could build a 450 parking stall garage and then provide 50 surface or 400 garage and 100 surface. It's however, the design builder that we hire conceptualizes the layout.
But didn't we already make all kinds of decisions on how many stories high it was going to be and all that? And then also where you're putting it is covering up some spots.
It is correct, yeah. So it'll be covering up, I think, this layout, it covers up about 100 stalls, yeah.
So you're making those up somewhere else. You're making them up in the structure or.
Yep, so, so we have 300 today, and at the end of the project, we'll have a total of about 800. So that will be 500 brand-new stalls.
Okay.
And that includes the parking stalls that are north of Maple as well, all of those north lots. So the north lots and then the parking along Narrow up there, like that angled, I think it's like back in parking along Narrow, then lots on the south, and then even the angled parking along Harrison. So that's all included in that 800 total.
So how do you envision the buses turning around in a very narrow area?
So we've done a lot of what we call auto turns. So through using drafting methods, we can take the length of our buses and basically, you know, drive them through, through these, through the streets. So we've done some analysis and there is a lot of room up at the top of that intersection. If you kind of, you know, if you remember, a lot of it is just a large, kind of like pedestrian entrance up at the top there. So we would kind of re-envision how pedestrians would walk onto the station and that whole top kind of north end would be basically just a big circle for the buses to turn around. Yeah.
Just right now, I don't think they could.
Yeah, they would take some, see how you, the very, very tip of it where it makes that turn will be taking out a few of those angled spots. Yeah. Um, you know, I don't know a whole lot of the history, but I believe that having the buses cross the tracks there and then make that sharp right down into the station, they couldn't make that turn. And I think there were issues with potentially buses queuing on the tracks. Yeah, a lot of this work was done before, before I was on this project back in 2019. But I can get a little bit more information if, if you want, on kind of how we landed on this.
Sarah, I can add some context. So Mr. Brown, before, Mr. Brown, before we, before Sarah was here, so before the pandemic, really, we were exclusively Sound Transit on trying to do just that. And they studied it for probably a year with city input. And the conclusion was reached, they just couldn't safely make that turn due to the railroad crossing.
Yeah, I don't know. I would have to kind of look at some of the details of the radiuses of those curbs, but they are, I do remember the reason that we don't come in that way is that sharp turn and potentially, you know, just like we have the same issue with cars queuing on that, you know, stacking up, you know, we worry about the buses as well, so.
On Thompson, when you come on to Thompson, in and out, are you going to be widening station lane? Because I know, I mean, I live right there and I see the buses, they very often, you know, drive over the sidewalk.
So you can't see it on here, but you can see it on your, on the drawing here a little bit, but that, that south or that northwest corner. We did purchase a tiny little sliver of the property there at the corner so that we can make the radius a little tighter, yes, or yes, bigger, so that they can make that turn there. Yeah. So we will be improving, you know, that, that intersection. When they're coming south and making that right-hand turn, they're not jumping up on the sidewalk, jumping the curb. Yeah.
So one other little one, Sarah, just, we, we have, I think you're paying or renting auxiliary lots. There used to be some over by where the, what's it called, the animal grub or, you know, a couple of these other places. You don't have any of those anymore, any aid auxiliary little lots around?
No, we do not, no.
No, we, we got auxiliary lots in Puyallup, and we still have that at the Red Lot. We didn't have any in the, in the last several years in Sumner.
Okay, great. So that does lead me to my next point here, the replacement parking during construction. So it will, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so I have a question about the daycare center that is right on the corner. What does that mean for the daycare center?
Well, we actually purchased the daycare center, I think, in 2019. And we have relocated the daycare center business and we now own that property. So that will be demolished as part of the proper, as part of the project and become part of the footprint of the either parking garage or surface lots.
Okay, and one, one other question is, so you can only go in and out of the garage on Harrison?
Um, yeah, well, you come out on station lane too.
Oh, I see that one, okay. But so only in on Harrison?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
And again, this is just a conceptual design. I think, so we have those in and out arrows based on feedback from the city and traffic analysis and how vehicles get in and out and how we put traffic back onto the city streets. So those are based on, you know, mitigations from the traffic analysis. Those could look a little different based on what the parking garage ends up looking like if it's, you know, if the shape is a little different, so. But we do have environmental mitigations that we have to follow based on like a traffic analysis that we did, all the new traffic that will generate and how we'll put that back on city streets. So that's part of, that's just kind of a showing that we're, you know, recognizing that utilization. Any other questions before?
What about, you know, the fire station and the, the need for them to be able to get it in and out?
Yeah, certainly.
Consideration about that.
Um, so we will be doing some work. The little blue kind of looks like a little duck head there on the corner. We will be doing some work to improve the sidewalks in front of that. So as you know, now there's kind of a gap with no sidewalks right there. So we will be putting a new sidewalk and a new curb cut in front of their property. So when that happens, I mean, the design builder will make sure that they have access all the time, you know, in and out of their property. Actually, during the entire duration of the construction. But likely, your construction, you know, zone, the fenced-off area that they're working with, the majority of the time will be north of Harrison. So, and the design builder will be required to make sure that if they close streets down, that they have routes for the fire department. So they'll be working very closely with the fire department at all times to make sure they can get in and out where they need to.
Carla, did you have your hand up?
I sure do.
Okay, go for it.
Thank you. So I have a question about funding because well, I don't remember now, pre-COVID, I've lost all sense of time. But with the variety of funding sources that goes into Sound Transit and the competitiveness of projects and the cost of supplies, I worried about projects being the chopping block? What does the funding look like for this? And what's the scenario as they, as Sound Transit Board tries to like balance their budgets?
That's a very big question. Do you want to?
Short answer is this project is funded and moving forward. So we are.
Thank you.
We are in the procurement phase and we are getting ready. Sarah lost some more information on that. A lot of those questions, Councilmember Newman, that you did raise and concerns, those are questions that the Sound Transit Board will be looking at for many other projects in the future. But the, the remaining three ST2 garages are on the, kind of the, the next on the docket for projects to be delivered and start construction over the next couple of years. So we're, we're excited moving, moving forward with that. There will be cost pressure things as there are on any project throughout that will communicate those, but we are at full speed ahead to get this contract out the door and get construction started soon.
Yeah, and we're committing to providing the same number of parking stalls. There hasn't been any reduction in scope. So no worry about that either.
Thank you. I would appreciate a heads up on any potential like threats to minimizing the scope of things, just so we have an opportunity to advocate. Not that we're asking you to get involved in that, but just the heads up, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So just lastly on this slide, I'm mentioning replacement parking during construction. So like I said, during construction, we're going to be displacing a lot of that parking. And we recognize that, you know, that could be a big burden, you know, to the, to the city, you know, downtown Sumner. What we are going to be doing is advocating and recommending riders use the Bonnie Lake parking ride. We've been working closely with, you know, several city staff you know, to discuss different options. As the pandemic has brought significant ridership changes over the last couple of years. You know, likely that strategy will just be only to use Bonnie Lake right now until we reach a certain capacity. So let's say, once Bonnie Lake hits like 80%, then there is the potential that we could go out and look at other alternatives in the neighborhood. But for now, we are going to actively just promote Bonnie Lake. One other thing to mention is that these parking stalls all won't just go away day one when we issue, you know, to the design bill. That is the notice to proceed to the design builder. Likely they'll come in stages. Parking up along Narrow Street could stay, you know, for most of the project if we're not touching that footprint, depending on what it looks like. So so we'll be working with city staff and riders to help them understand what parking is closed. And, and, you know, you know, what they should do and how to get to Bonnie Lake. You know, there is a bus that, you know, provides service. I think it's an 11-minute, 11-minute ride and it's timed with all the sounder, all the sounder, all the sounder service. So there's no need to worry about, you know, getting on, if you get on the bus, you'll get on the train. So, yeah, so it's a pretty easy, a pretty easy system. We'll continue to work with the city of Sumner through, through all of this and keep everyone updated. We plan to have a letter of concurrence as we move forward. Just to kind of lay out, you know, both of our expectations. You know, we want this to be a win-win for both of us. So yeah, so just to make sure we're both on the same page. So we're working with city staff on that currently, so. All right, any other questions on this one before I jump?
So, you know, a number of cars come from Shaw Road and Ordean and, you know, so how are you going to accommodate them? Because they would not be going back to, up to Bonnie Lake Park. So are there any alternatives in this area where you could, you know, like rent land or something?
Um, so we're going to stick with just using the, the spots that'll be available through construction. And then once those fill up, you know, Bonnie Lake, and then, do you want to?
Yeah, I think what we're, as Sarah said, we're hoping is because Bonnie Lake is underutilized. And we do know from some of our data that there are a good number of, of riders that are using the Sumner lot here at the station coming from that area that that can catch some of that. But we are going to be working to identify other opportunities, like you said, here closer to the station vicinity. And work on some plan that we can promote what's out there and underutilized. Another component is we do know that there are considerable amount of folks from Puyallup that are coming to Sumner. And with the Puyallup Garage elopent at the end of the year, that could be another release file before we even get to construction of this project. And we do have these counts monthly. We're also going to be looking to do some license plate survey data pretty soon. But whatever we land on for a solution, we will be working with city staff and to keep you apprised of that. And then it is a letter of concurrence. So with the changes of ridership from the pandemic, we have some different ways that we think we can address this. We may not need to try to go out and lease private land right off the bat. But we could have that be maybe a little further in and make sure we're maximizing resources to go into the garage and maximize the number of stalls. So it's kind of a moving target, but we do want to work very closely with the city and, and as Sarah said, have a letter of concurrence that makes sure we're all on the same page and, and like the plan moving forward.
Patrick, did you have a question?
I think Pat was waiting first.
Okay, Pat?
Yes, I'm, so I'm just curious, and I may be a little bit ahead. How long, or if you know, just sort of an estimate of construction time will, will there be for this garage?
Yeah, so I, and then another couple of slides down, I do have a schedule I was.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, thank you.
And I have comments toward the end of the presentation, but I do would like to request, is there a way that we can get in our, like a month, one of the monthly study sessions? An update of those rider numbers?
Yeah, and Mistry, that's something that, you know, we meet with Sound Transit almost every week right now, as we're going through this process. And they've been wonderful about providing us that updated data. So as Sarah mentioned, there will be that letter of concurrence that will likely be bringing to council for review on the terms for replacement parking. And then that's something that we can work with them on, providing regular updates to council as, as it goes. Because we've definitely expressed council's concerns and staff's concerns about while the Bonnie Lake numbers and the Sumner numbers are only a piece of the puzzle. Because as you saw, those, there's still 600 riders that are either being dropped off at the station historically, pre-pandemic, or we all know, they've been parking on our residential streets. So that's something that we've shared with them and they've agreed to work with us on finding a solution. And I think, just to back up with Sarah and Austin, that the, the ridership numbers have completely changed from the pandemic. And they're having a hard time, just as you can imagine, how do you figure out, how is that going to return over the next two years as this project is being built? And some of it, we're not going to know until it happens. So, that answer your question, Mistry?
Yeah, it does. And that's what I was curious, because I, I anticipate things to continue to steadily rise until it gets back to and above capacity again.
Yeah, we sure hope so as well, so. Okay, all right, go ahead. Next slide, please. And these are just a couple of other access improvements that are part of the project that I wanted to mention. These are both Sound Transit funded, so the, the whole SR410 is not Sound Transit funded. But we did fund a portion of some non-motorized improvements as part of that project. And that was designed and constructed by the city. And that work was done and completed, I believe, in 2021 that was done. So we're wrapping up, finishing, you know, that work. And there also are some pedestrian bicycle improvements that Sound Transit has funded that, that I know have been, been done through a variety of other small projects, small works projects that the city has been putting out. It includes pedestrian lighting, curb ramps, sidewalks, any other type of pedestrian work that you see around the city. And I think there is a bit more of that work to continue, I think, through. And I think there is a bit more of that work to continue, I think, through twenty twenty-three is when they plan to finish all of that work. So.
I think Barbara had a question.
Yeah, cause well, I live on Thompson, so the, that mountain circle, there's a crosswalk there and I really think it needs one of those flashy lights because there's, you know, so many people, the cars are all leaving. And then, you know, it's hard to see, especially in the winter. So
Yeah.
if that can be part of, you know, as the next year to get some the better lighting with that crosswalk.
So as part of the agreement for this, we, we provided the money to the city of Sumner and city of, the city of Sumner is determining what projects, you know, they're going to utilize that, the funding for. So Sound Transit doesn't have too much to say on where, how the money is spent. It just has to meet a certain criteria that we've established in a, in a letter of concurrence. So I don't know exactly what those projects are, but I think your, your traffic group at the city might know.
I know Mr. Dole is listening, so I will make sure that he gets that feedback.
Okay, next slide, please. Schedule. So we are in the middle of procurement right now. So when I say that, that means we are working on hiring a design builder. So this is a contractor that'll come in, they'll do all the final design and then build the project. So we have issued RFQ for that, that went out March of twenty twenty-two this year. And we actually just issued RFP for the project last week. And then we will have the proposals due September nineteenth, and then we'll take a couple of months to evaluate those proposals. There will be first three firms competing. So there we have an evaluation panel. The city of Sumner is sitting on that panel. And then we will decide based on this, the proposal submitted, we'll choose a top firm. And we will issue that firm notice to proceed. And we've, we're scheduling that now for January of twenty twenty-three. And then we've got the blue line there. That, that blue line indicates design and construction. So you know, the day we issue NTP, the designer will get busy finalizing that design. That'll take a couple of months. You know, up to six months really to finalize everything. And that design builder will be working with the city of Sumner to get permits for construction. So we anticipate construction to start probably mid twenty twenty-three through the end of twenty twenty-five. So when we're anticipating open for service. So about two and a half years for construction, six months-ish for design.
Sure. Carla? Do you have a comment, Charlotte?
It's kind of been passed. I was gonna wait until the end. I took my hand down. But all I want to do was thank Sound Transit for their funding for our bike lanes. Cause I think it's something that I've heard people asking for. And it's kind of, kind of, it's not our first experiment, but it is a nice connector. And so I just wanted to thank them for making that part of the project. It was an old, it was an old raised hand.
Yeah, this whole hybrid thing is can be a little challenging. But I've actually never presented live this like this during a Zoom call. So this is, you know.
We have a question here. Sure.
Is there, is there firms that specialize in building parking garages? Is that the kind of companies that bid this? You said you had three in the running?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we have, I don't know if they're construction companies that specialize in design, but they are very, very familiar. They've done a lot of design build projects. They've done a lot of parking garages. They've done a lot of parking garages, you know, in, in urban areas and small, you know, tight constrained areas. So those are the things that we really look for when we
Is the one that did Puyallups bidding on ours?
So I, we're kind of in the cone of silence and I can't talk about the designers that have been, that have, that have submitted so far.
Okay.
So it's confidential at the moment. So.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes, so during the design and construction phase, which I'm assuming construction, as you mentioned, probably is more like July twenty twenty-three. I just want to confirm that the only parking that will remain intact will be what's in that north lot. And, and for at least a time being before the bus loop is worked on, the parking that's at along the Narrow Street, is that correct?
So if, yes and no. The north lot parking will always stay.
Correct, okay.
Yep. And then all the rest of the parking could come and go in phases. So say, say the contractor is just gonna work, you know, kind of on the, you know, the east side of the project for now. They're gonna start demolition. Maybe there's some utility work on one side. We could close down all of that parking for now and leave some open and it could be done in stages. So it's hard to know exactly what the parking closures will look like right now. Once we have a design builder on board, once that NTP dime in there, so in January, we will have a better understanding of what the design is gonna look like and what the contractor proposal proposes for, for those closures, how they're gonna time all of the, you know, you know, their sequencing of work. So by the end of the year, we should have a better understanding of how the parking will come and go through the project.
And, and one other question about, I guess, sort of a license plate check. I'm not really sure what the term you used for that, but that is, I'm assuming to determine really how many cars are parking that have Bonnie Lake addresses as opposed to Sumner addresses? Or Puyallup addresses, is that correct?
Yep, yeah, it gives us a snapshot of where people are coming from.
Okay.
It'll, yeah, it'll show you. It just breaks it down into like small micro regions. I can't remember what those are called, but yeah, we can share that information too. It's really cool to see kind of the clusters of where people are coming from when they park in the lots and then in Bonnie Lake. So.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, next slide. All right. So this is just kind of a reminder of what design build is compared to design bid build, which has just been, you know, a traditional delivery method. So design bid build on the left, Sound Transit is the owner, would put together one hundred percent engineering drawings, one hundred percent plans and put that out to to bid in the market. Oftentimes, we would just have whoever the highest bidder is, you know, win that job. And that would be, we'd have two separate contractors. So we'd have a designer and a contractor, two separate entities, not really working together collaboratively in a design on the project. So on the design bill side on the right, we hire, you know, instead we hire one designer. So this is a two-step process. So we put out an RFQ initially. So we go out to the market and we say, anyone that's interested in this project, you know, submit qualifications to, to us. And then the evaluation team shortlists based on those qualifications. And then we put out an RFP. That RFP is a request for proposal. And it, it is based on, it includes things like, it includes project requirements, which includes things like technical requirements. It has to be this high, you have to have this many stalls. You have to have this many elevators, this kind of fire equipment. And it also includes, you know, the look and feel, the vision statement of what the project should look like. It tells the designer, you know, what, you know, what considerations they need to take in the visual design of the project. This is, it's based on values rather than just simply price. So we hope to get more value for a lower cost through utilizing design build. And like I said, you know, when you have one designer or one, one contractor that's designing and building the project, you have less competition in, you know, designing and contracting it. So, you know, so the designers are working their hardest to, you know, design something that, you know, is, is efficient to build. So so we do see some value in that. And there's only one entity that, that we're working with rather than dealing with, you know, two separate entities, a designer and a contractor. So that's just a quick little snapshot and done design build. Next slide. Um, so a little bit about the vision statement that I mentioned that goes into this project requirements. So this is given to the design builder to use, you know, when they're developing their proposal. This vision statement was developed with, you know, through community outreach, engagement, visual engagement with the city of Sumner and community members. So we put together a vision statement that we sent to them. These are just some snapshots from, from the downtown area that reflect what that vision statement was saying. And, you know, I guess kind of one snapshot from the vision statement I'll read is that the new Sumner Station parking garage is envisioned to match the small town feel of Sumner and fit within Sumner's main street. Since it's, you know, one of the largest buildings downtown, the vision statement said that they don't want the building to stand out. They don't want it to, you know, be bright or have gold colors. They want it to kind of be more integrated into the urban fabric of downtown. So lots of brick masonry, neutral color palettes. You know, lots of pedestrian friendly elements, decorative metal screening, architectural lighting, you know, kind of to mimic the feel of your, your downtown main street.
So, so Sarah, way back when, there was always talk of somewhat of a little bit of a green space at one area in front of it. Has that been eliminated or is it still a possibility or?
It's still a possibility. It's not something that we've lined out as a requirement from the design builder. But there is a possibility we could see some of that in the proposals that we get. All right, next slide, please. And we did want to let everyone know that we picked an artist for the project. So Paz Dedlag Calzada, I misheard her name up. She'll be the artist for the project and she's gonna incorporate, you know, her artwork into the new garage. She works mostly on like site-specific murals, installations, and she does a lot of public art. She is originally from Spain and her focus is on nature and healing. She had an opportunity back in twenty twenty to actually visit the city, spend some time with community members. And she did a little research on the botanical history of the area and her hope is to provide a design that will be inspired by local native flora. So a lot of her designs are of like native plants and, you know, have kind of that botany theme. So looking forward to seeing how that's incorporated into the project. You know, as we discussed over in Puyallup when we did our tour, they incorporated the artwork through the stair tower. So it's kind of a mural on, on their glass stairwells going up through the main stairwell entrances. So, so it ended up turning, turning out pretty cool. So that'll be kind of a fun element of the project as well. So. And then one more slide I have here. This is just an over, sorry, an overview of some of our outreach we've done. Just twenty nineteen, time flies, but back in twenty nineteen, you know, we did all of these visual, these outward stakeholder workshops on all the visual design. In, you know, outreach to the community, we also did a presentation to the design commission, which updated our current vision statement. You can find the vision statement on the website if you want to read the whole thing. Recently, we've come here to the city of Sumner Open House to discuss the project, answer any questions about the garage. And then most recently, we were at Rubarb Days this weekend. We had a really great turnout. You know, we were there just to answer questions, you know, about the new garage and the sounder line. Had a lot of good feedback from that. So. And then just, you know, upcoming through construction, we're gonna be working closely with city staff. You know, about impacts to the city, closures, things like that. Also updating our website. You know, Melanie Mayock up there is our community outreach specialist. She's great. I think most of you have probably met her and chatted with her before. And I think she's gonna be setting up another presentation, maybe a council presentation as we get closer to construction, once we have proposals and issue that notice to proceed to the designer. So. More to come.
Any other questions for them? Councilmember Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I've got some constructive feedback and, and I'm gonna start with my negative, but I'll finish with some positives. So. I, I, I appreciate where we're at, but I, even prior to COVID, I was extremely disappointed in the pace and the longevity of this project. I've only been on council since twenty sixteen, but it goes back, you know, long before I came on board. And even as, as soon as seventeen or eighteen, we were pretty much ready to go at multiple times or multiple steps. And it seems like it just continues one thing after another, whether it be budget, budget related or a number of issues. But my, my positives is that I really appreciate that there is not a, at least not currently a reduction in scope because that would be a whole nother discussion. And it's, I, I appreciate that we're starting to move forward with it and that we actually have some timelines in place and some, well, we've had some in the past, but we have some potential timelines that we're looking at. And, and I appreciate that we are moving forward and, and all the work that everybody's done to get to that point.
Yeah, we are actively moving forward. So we will have proposals due September nineteenth. So I mean, we are, we are in the middle of choosing this designer. So we are, we are moving fast.
Yeah, you might show in the whole screen.
Councilmember Cole?
Yes, so I just wanted to say that I'm excited about the parking garage because I am a regular sounder rider. I ride two, three times a week. And so I'm looking forward to it. I'm not as excited as I was before because I see what the ridership is today. And I think we're gonna have more parking spots than we actually really need, but you know, that's a good thing. And it's just my opinion that I don't think the ridership is good, just based on what I'm seeing now. I see the ridership has grown over the last couple of months. And, you know, so not as much, not nearly as as many riders or parkers vehicles as there were, because I get parking on the street every day and it's pretty easy. So anyway, so thanks for all the hard work and I'm really excited about it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just a little question. When you, you know, our drop-off is actually on Catholic Avenue. I think what it was supposed to be, it's, but I never seen anybody use that one. You know, you know what I'm talking about? We have that concrete sign and then we have this little, kind of a little scoop out you can take. I've never seen anybody dropping it. I'm not there, but they would have to. I, I just wonder, is there, is it gonna be a little bit clearer about, or maybe that's not the best side to have a drop-off at? It's just something that I've always wondered about every since we've had this station.
Yeah, that will likely be reconfigured through, through construction. And we will work through construction to make sure it's clear where to drop off. You know, passenger drop-off. So.
It just kind of looks like a nice sign now more than an actual active. Cause you can't really, when you're at the level you're at, you don't see the station as much. You're kind of a little bit low. It's just a thought on how, when, when you talk about design and stuff. Okay.
Do you know, will they have drop-off and pickup at the station, you know, once they have two lanes of bus traffic? That's where I think most people drop people off and pick them up.
Yes, the intention is, but it will be clearly kind of separated from the bus traffic. So, yeah.
Well, thank you. I think if it looks like Puyallup, I'll be happy.
Well, it's gonna look a little different than Puyallup, probably.
But if a garage can be beautiful, that one was beautiful.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I just have to say that.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so we are going to move into executive session, I think. Council meeting agenda. Does anybody have any, any thing to change, any meeting issues coming up?
I have none.
August third, August the
Who's the alternate?
That's member Stewart.
Okay.
Anybody else have any, oh, Councilmember Newman?
Yeah, so um, on Wednesday is the ARPA committee meeting. And I can be there for the third first 30 to 45 minutes and then I have a hard stop. At least at 45 minutes into it. And so I just don't know agenda what I had. I'm sorry, I haven't seen the agenda yet to see how long that was gonna go. Whether I need an alternate or if the first 30 to 45 minutes is gonna be good.
The uh meeting agenda will be longer than 30 minutes. I know, Mr. Reed, you had a conflict as well, so you might want to even look at rescheduling that.
I did. This is, yeah, this is the week that I've been mentioning for a while that I'm gonna be up north uh from the 13th to the 15th.
Are you talking July 13th?
Yeah, two days from now.
Well, doesn't it say canceled on our thing?
I'm okay with a week later, just to throw it out there for, like, we don't have to figure it out now, but I'm okay with a week later.
American Rescue Plan, July 13th?
For the Design Commission, that's.
It's not meant for ARPA. Okay. Well, I took it as ARPA, so.
So, Mr. Reed and you're the chair. Did I hear that you want to move it to the 20th?
Um, I should be able to do the 20th.
It works for me.
Oh, wait, we've got public safety at 5:30.
Yes, yeah, we could do it on the 19th if that works for the committee.
19th works for me.
Okay.
And it's uh. I could do it at 6:00. Cuz I don't leave Olympia till 5:00 on the 19th.
Yes, okay. 6 o'clock, Charlotte?
On the 19th? Uh, yeah, I'm okay.
Okay.
All right, I will uh get it rescheduled tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any other meeting issues or committee issues?
I'm sorry, uh, Mayor. Mr. Windish, I know you're in the audience. Does I need to make sure the 19th actually works for you since this is your big agenda item?
Oh, we need staff.
I know.
That was sarcasm.
Ryan, is that?
Yeah, yeah, it works for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. In fact, it works better for me on the 19th than than a Wednesday. Great.
Is he gonna let us know about people that applied for and who got accepted?
It's actually already in your packet that was emailed out this morning.
Okay.
Yeah, and if if you review it and have any questions, please feel free to uh contact me before the meeting.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. So now we will move into executive session at.
6:54.
6:54. We need to read all the different reasons. Pending pending and potential litigation per RCW42. Dot 30 dot 110. One I I I and RCW42 dot 30 dot 110. One I I, performance of a public employee per RCW42 point 30 point 1101G. And labor negotiations per RCW42 point 30 point 140. 60 minutes. 60.
60.
And uh.
That would be my one minute. Executive session ever.
Thank you very much.
So council members, uh, to stay in this meeting room, we'll make sure that we will start the executive session in just a moment.